We'll discuss submitting public comment for the proposed liquid natural gas facility that is proposed for 249 Sturbridge Road in Charlton, just over the border. At 6:45, we'll discuss the dates for potential meeting with the Board of Selectmen to discuss the Route 15 study, which was prepared by CMRPC, and to determine an appropriate course of action. Following that, we'll have the town planner update, then all the new business, and then adjournment. So has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of the October 23 meeting? Any comments, questions, changes?
Yes. On page two, the third sentence down, I don't know if we should, it says most recent conversations, and I'm proposing that we put a comma, "by Table Three Restaurant Group," comma, also considered opposing. I don't, I just don't want to give the impression that we were discussing that as a board. I don't know what everybody else feels about that.
Makes sense to me.
Anything else? If not, motion then to approve as amended?
So move.
Second? Okay. All in favor? Oppose, no one?
Abstaining.
Oh, abstaining, right.
Abstaining.
Abstaining, so five in favor, two abstaining. Okay, the next is the discussion on the appointment of the Central Mass Regional Planning Representative. We have an opening for that. We have the, we have an alternate. We're looking for the primary or?
That's right. So Mr. McNeil was appointed as the primary and Mr. Chisholm as the alternate when we reorganized, and since the, Mr. McNeil had to resign, we have an opening for the representative.
Okay.
And I'm looking for a volunteer, and I thought it would be a wonderful opportunity for our newest member to get involved, learn a lot of things about planning and about the regional planning agency. I had a little bit of a discussion with him. I think he thought I was kidding, but I was not. And I don't know.
These are basically quarterly meetings that you have to?
Basically quarterly meetings, yes. Yes. And he's already attended one meeting, so there's only three to go this year. And other, in the annual dinner and things like that.
No, I'm happy to be a part of that.
Great.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Not that we put any pressure at all.
Okay. Do we want to then appoint a primary and then a secondary one, or how do we do that?
We already had the alternate, which was Mr. Chisholm.
I didn't know if Mr. Chisholm wanted to move up.
Oh, maybe.
I'd be welcome to that, yeah.
Yeah.
Whenever's easiest for the board.
Okay. And that way, Chris can be the alternate.
Okay.
Great. That'd be terrific. Very good. Okay, next on the agenda is to discuss submitting public comments for the proposed liquid natural gas, natural gas facility on 249 Sturbridge Road in Charlton. And Jean has some information. You want to go over that?
Sure. So Charlie and I attended the public comment hearing on the liquid natural gas facility in Charlton on November 13th, and I had provided you all with the handbook that was handed out that evening, the energy facility siting handbook, along with some sections of the law, and a copy of the company's, basically the legal notice for their petition, and it gave the link to all of the documents. So I had gone through and reviewed all of the documents. There was a very kind of a minimal site plan in there because at this time, they're, the Energy Facility Siting Board is determining whether this application can go forward. So they've asked for zoning exemptions under Chapter 48, Section 3, as a public utility, and they will need to file for wetlands permitting, and they've agreed to do a kind of informal site plan process if the Energy Facility Siting Board allows this to go forward. So what we learned that night is that we could apply to be an intervenor where we would be, become part of the process. So we would be notified, we would be able to go to Boston, testify, and things like that. In my opinion, I'm not sure that we need to go to that extent. I think we need to be aware of what's going on, we need to pay attention to what's going on. When we were there that evening, I got up and spoke and said that one of my biggest concerns was from a regional safety concern, so if there's an emergency, they were talking about doing training for Charlton first responders, but they didn't talk about anybody in the surrounding towns, so I raised that as an issue. So I went on record as having that comment that evening, and I think the only other thing is because it's on Route 20 and just the nature of the operation is, you know, the traffic, and they had submitted a traffic study, and it said there would be no noticeable impact, but, you know, a lot of people raised issues about the traffic, and I think that's maybe one other area where we could offer some public comment, just saying that some mitigation may be necessary and they should carefully review it. I mean, to be clear, this is not a small facility. It's, it's on a 200-acre parcel. They'll be using about 11 acres for the facility, and they will hold 1 million gallons of liquid nitric, liquid natural gas on site. So it, you know, it's not really a small matter. I think it's something we definitely want to be aware of and keep our eye on, but I think if we just go on record with the public comment, that would be sufficient, in my opinion. I think Charlie felt the same way when we were there.
Right. Yeah, I really did. Another thing that, you know, we noticed when we were there, when they were talking about the criteria that this Energy Facility Siting Board has to look at, an awful lot of it seemed to be focused on the economic feasibility and value to the, to the state, to the country, I guess, in the area, from a facility like this. It almost seemed like things that a lot of people worried about, like, you know, safety and the traffic issues and so forth, were certainly out there, but the expectation was that those things are all manageable. And a lot of their focus really seemed to be on showing that it would be a beneficial facility, a need for it here. And I think some of the things came up, for example, about, you know, it being located here, and, you know, the need then to have the trucks transfer out to where the gas would actually be used. And I guess that's the purpose of it, is to try to, you know, have a place that is more or less centrally located. So I think Jean is correct, that any kind of, you know, emergency with it would certainly, I think, involve, you know, regional, you know, fire response. And the traffic study itself, there's a copy of it there. I mean, it showed like, I think it was 12 trips, and they brought that up to like 16, and then that's double because you have trips in and out, so, I mean, it was like 64 trips a day. And so, from what they presented, compared to the traffic in the area, you know, it doesn't have that much of an impact, but then there were some other discussions about the location and point of, you know, the site view, where it actually goes out onto, you know, the road and so forth. And those would all certainly have to be handled through the site plan review that they have in Charlton. So I don't know if anyone has any other questions or thoughts on it?
Did they discuss it all like, because trucks, I'm assuming, would be probably heading towards the Highway 8490, so they would be taking a left onto 20?
They didn't go into much, you know, detail on that.
Yeah.
You know, the whole presentation is far as the project itself, or the specifics on the project, seem to be really focused on a very basic area. In other words, they showed, for example, a thermos jar to give you the idea that they actually have insulation around a lot of these, you know, facilities that they have there. So it was really not very detailed as far as anything specifically. You know, they talked about the primary site and an alternative site, but just in very little detail on them.
It was marketing. It was a marketing meeting.
No, I think it was more geared toward, I'm sorry, Charlie.
Okay.
I think it was more geared toward the issues that the Energy Facility Siting Board had to make a ruling on. So it was whether to, you know, grant the zoning exemptions, whether they qualified for the public utility, and whether it would provide a public benefit in terms of energy usage. So it wasn't a site plan hearing, it was an Energy Facility Siting Board hearing. So they were really focused on their issues. So in fact, when I got up, my first comment was, wow, I expected a little more of a presentation about the project itself. And it really wasn't about that. It was a little, very elementary overview of the gas conversion process, and, like Charlie said, and the storage of it. I mean, they showed a picture of a tank, and like you said, next to it, they had a thermos standing there. So, you know, it was, you know, it was kind of basic in that regard.
That's pretty much what I meant. They wanted to show how, how they presented as simple and safe, and we have so many measures in place, so you have nothing to be concerned about.
Right.
Whereas, we know, we do have a lot to be thinking about. And did the town, how did it happen to come to Charlton? That's not a central location. It did to what?
They said they had been looking at sites for several months, and that they had identified several sites, and that they narrowed it down to this site. And they talked about being able to give redundant supply to some of the utilities like National Grid, so.
Is it just because of highway access, do you think?
I think probably land availability, highway access, limited visibility from other properties. If you look in the application, they give kind of viewshed pictures from different locations in Sturbridge and in Charlton, and so I think that they wanted something that was on the highway, not extremely visible, maybe they're, you know, I can't speak to the process that they went through.
They never came to Sturbridge.
Actually, they did come to Sturbridge. If you remember, a few years back, it was a little different proposal. It was Liberty Utilities, and we actually had a meeting with the Board of Selectmen, and they were talking about gas distribution. So they were talking about putting a metering station on Route 15, but then doing gas distribution throughout the town. So this proposal, it's called Liberty, but it's different people, and it's a metering station, but then the liquid natural gas facility, and distribution is not on the table at this point.
How many, you know, it's kind of the same thing on, where we've got the trucks that are carrying car, the car carrier thing. You know, I'm sure it was kind of presented the same way, but my experience with that is, is that it's a lot more traffic than, it increases, you know, it's been increasing since they've been there, and they seem to drive faster every day. But how many trucks do they anticipate coming and going every day?
Sixty-four.
And how, what's the tonnage on these trucks? How big are they? Are they really quite heavy or large?
Pretty good size.
Yeah, they're like the regular tanker trucks.
Eighteen-wheeler.
Right, so I'm thinking, you know, that just, we just have spent the entire summer with the ramp onto Route 84 being under construction. I don't think it'll, it's still not quite finished, I don't think. And when we have more trucks, we just have more, you know, construction that has to follow up because of the tonnage and so on. But how many trucks do they think a day, did they say?
Well, they were talking, I think, 64 trips.
Sixty-four trips.
And that was, in their view, very conservative, based on the number that.
So it could be more.
No, in other words, they thought that that was given a big factor of safety over what they were predicting the regular.
Okay, I see what you mean, the other way.
Yeah, they were trying to ramp up everything to show that even with a number much higher than what the facility indicated, you know, they would be doing, they still didn't have that much of an impact on it. But again, I mean, certainly site, you know, plan review would, would have to review the traffic, so.
What are the hours? Have they talked about the hours of operation?
No. Excuse me. They really didn't talk about the operations specifically, because I think the one thing we have to realize too is they're still looking at two alternate sites, and their application to the siting board is to see if they will consider them a public utility and therefore waive, you know, they would be exempt under zoning. And so that's the process that they're at right now. And if they get through this process, then they'll have the local processes that they need to go through. So there's permitting on the state level, they'd need a wetlands permit, and they would be exempt from zoning if this is approved, but they said they agreed to go through an informal site plan process. So we don't really, other than what was in their application, there's not, you know, a tremendous amount of detail like, that we would expect. But they did say there would be three shifts, there would be three employees, I believe, maximum. So it's not a big job generator, it's, you know, a few employees, but truck traffic to distribute this.
Jean, my hearing isn't quite up to what it was. Did I understand you to say that you were talking about wetland there?
Yes.
Good. That's a very wet area.
Yes, yes, it is. They would have to file with Charlton under the wetlands protection out.
It surprised me in the Energy Facility Siting Board that they were applying for a comprehensive exemption from Town of Charlton zoning bylaws.
Yes.
Is that normal?
Yes. So under Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 3, there's an exemption for public utilities. So their petition right now before the Energy Siting Board is to make that determination that they qualify as a public utility and therefore would be exempt from the Charlton zoning bylaw.
It did surprise me to read that. You know, when the citing, when that citing board is meeting, I could understand if they exempted certain things, but to go into it, in Charlton, you're not even part of this, is peculiar, I think.
I think one of the things that they mentioned on that discussion was that there are certain things that, you know, normally aren't anticipated in a, in a regular development. I mean, things like, you know, the size of the, of the, you know, power requirements. And so those are the kind of things that they feel, you know, need to have sort of a comprehensive permit, things that are out of the scope and scale that you'd normally see in a commercial or an industrial development that a town would see. And I think that is, as Jean mentioned, you know, they have to make that case to the, to the board that considers these as, you know, these energy-related facilities.
Who has to make the case to them?
Well, the proponents are the developer. The developer would have to, you know, convince this Energy Facility Siting Board that they meet all those criteria. Yeah, one of the things, you know, what they had actually said is that they anticipated 25 truck deliveries per hour, no, 25 truck deliveries on an eight-hour workday. And then to remain conservative, they assumed 32 truck deliveries. So instead of the 25, they upped it to 32, and of course, they're in and out, so that's where the 64 came from. And so they also had, you know, the number, and it's right, I don't know if we had copies of it, but it's, it's just a little, you know, chart that they have on their, on their traffic study. And the rest of it, you know, deals with the impact that has on the roads and the current, you know, traffic volume and so forth that they have. And they conclude, you know, that it, that it is not an appreciable difference to the traffic that's there, you know, currently. But again, that really wasn't discussed in any great detail, other than when the, you know, question came up about how much activity there will be. And then when the public began to get up and speak, there were more issues like, you know, the potential for explosion, the idea of how much gas is there and so forth. And, you know, the answer that the developer came back with, and they, they seemed to be accepting of it at the time right now, is that, you know, those things were all, you know, predictable, preventable, and controllable, and, you know, there are standards that allow these things to be safe. They gave, you know, figures on, you know, the number of accidents, you know, that have occurred across the country over the years. And so there is obviously a lot of data on that, but that really wasn't what the focus of the, you know, meeting was.
Charlie, I got a couple of things. In the second paragraph of what Jean has proposed, open for discussion, but at the first sentence where it says, "We wish to reiterate that we strongly believe that there should be regional training," I think, I'd like to see at a minimum yearly regional training, because we do have a turnover in the fire department, and also because we're not getting any tax revenue from this that it be paid for by NEC.
The training.
The training.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't want to see just one training in 10 years. I think it should be, you know, yearly, you know, at least propose it anyways, put it in their head. And the other thing I think that they need to remember, with an additional 65 trucks a day, is that what you said, Charlie?
Sixty-four, well, 64 trips, 32.
My point, my point is that the Mass Pike being a semi-private entity shuts down during snowstorms all LNG and propane tankers. So now all them trucks are going to be running on Route 20, where they can't legally shut it down. But the turnpike does shut down to the tankers, and they're either going to park somewheres until the road reopens to LNG and propane, but I think that needs to be considered.
Good point.
So I don't know what everybody feels about adding that verbiage in, but that's my opinion.
No, I agree with you, Russ. I think that's, that's a very good point.
Yeah, I think, you know, in, in the first sentence here where Jean's comment was, "should be regional," you know, training, I think, we're not really trying to, you know, put any time limits or criteria on it. It doesn't hurt to say, you know, annual refresher, but I think that, you know, initially, you know, just the, the training to understand what would happen in a, in a major, you know, problem there, needs to make sure that all, I think, the emergency response, you know, departments in the area are brought in on it. I mean, you know, I don't disagree that there should be regular training, and if it's an ongoing, you know, cost, they should, you know, certainly, you know, have to pay for it. But I think the idea was just to bring to the intention that, you know, we certainly feel strongly that because of the scope and the size of this, anything significant that happened there, you know, certainly would require a regional response. So whatever training is needed for that, you know, we'd expect to have addressed during the overall, you know, planning for it.
I realize it's still in the very preliminary stages. Did they give any idea as to best-case scenario when construction or anything of this could start?
No.
It is another area where we don't have traffic lights, so depending on the direction of their travel, you know, it's cross-traffic, and, you know, that's, that's a concern in and of itself. Because at that end of the, of the road, traffic picks up there before it gets to Route 20. And I think that that's a consideration too. It's more residential also in that area than the rest of Route 48. I mean, yeah.
Twenty.
What's that?
Twenty.
Twenty, you know, or whatever.
Or 49.
Forty-nine. I've met 49. And that makes a difference too, I think, in a lot of respect in terms of, there's been a lot of pressure put on that area already, it seems.
I just have a question for clarity. Is it, my, is my understanding correct that the state allowed this developer to find a spot, and now the state can overrule the local zoning laws? Is that how it works?
Well, in the Mass General Laws, there's an exemption for public utilities, so the process is, is that they file to the Energy Facility Siting Board, and they have hearings with the Energy Facility Siting Board.
The developer?
Yes. And they make the determinations whether that relief should be granted, and if the project should go forward. And as Charlie mentioned, it's mainly focused on whether it's providing, you know, redundancy for energy supply and, you know, serving that need, I think far more greater than what we would consider as our normal concerns. It really is not their concern at this time.
What recourse do we have as a town? Do we have any?
Well, you could join in as an intervenor, but you have to show that you have standing and why you have standing, and then there would be, you know, you would be allowed to testify in Boston, things like that. And, you know, I'm not sure that we have the capacity to, or the desire to want to testify in Boston about this. I think those are kind of our main issues, as I see it right now, are traffic impacts and safety. And I think those will need to be addressed through the local processes if it gets that far. But right now, this isn't necessarily about that, but I think it's important to go on record as saying, as an abutting community, we have these concerns. And so that way, at least it's in the record. You know, we testified at the hearing, and this written testimony has to be there by Friday.
Now, safety.
Who makes that determination that we intervene?
If we're going to be an intervener?
Who makes that determination? You said if they decide that we qualify as an intervener, who makes that determination?
Oh, there's a whole section in the law that I put in your packet, so it gives you kind of, you know, different scenarios when, and you can just be somebody who is not necessarily called an intervener, it's a.
A petitioner of some kind.
Like on page 11.
Or you could be a limited participant, or you can be an intervener. So it says, "Any person who desires to participate as a limited participant in any proceeding shall make written request for the status. Every request to participate shall describe the manner in which the petitioner is interested in his or her representative capacity, if any, and shall state the contention of the petitioner and the purpose for which participation is requested." And then it says, goes on to say, "The presiding officer shall make that determination," so.
I'm thankful that the traffic and the safety should a fire, et cetera, occur, was addressed, but that's right on the corner of our town line. And I don't think many people are aware of what's going on right now. Remember, it took a while before people really understood what was happening on 49. So I'm just thinking, is there a way, like, you had asked this, Heather, and I, you know, the fact that safety and traffic has been addressed, I don't think is enough for our town. Is there something else we can do as, maybe as, as a town? Be it the planning board, the Board of Selectmen, whomever, to be more involved in this process so that we do know exactly what's happening and not hearsay from attending a town meeting?
Well, you know, I, I think on that, as far as being involved to know what's going on, I mean, all their information here, you know, will be on the public, there, there's, you know, there's websites, there's, there's hearings and so forth. So if we're concerned about, you know, just being certain we know what's going on, we don't have to become an intervenor or a petitioner or anything for that. I mean, I really think that, you know, the important thing for us to do right now is to make these comments. These are the comments that, these, these are the issues that probably most directly affect us, certainly the traffic, and if an emergency occurred, you know, the, the need for regional response. You know, the fact that this, you know, may be cited there, and it stores an awful lot of, you know, natural gas, liquefied natural gas, and it has a potential for explosion is certainly well-known, I mean, to the developers and the board and the utilities and everyone. So, I mean, you know, we don't need to really, you know, reinforce people's concerns about that. I think people recognize that people are concerned about that. And whether or not we, as a community, could add anything to that or change anything on that, I, I think is a real question. In other words, you know, we do have impact from traffic or potential impact, you know, we do have a concern about, you know, safety and the need for our, you know, first responders and fire department and so forth possibly to, to participate, to react and support anything that occurred. But beyond that, an awful lot of the things, you know, that they'll be reviewing in this process, again, is, you know, the benefit to the area, you know, the need for, you know, this gas to actually be sold and, you know, delivered to facilities like National Grid or, you know, they talked about facilities both in Springfield and, you know, toward Framingham and that area, which is one of the reasons that, you know, this location works for them. So I, I, you know, sense there's concern, and I'm sure there's a lot of concern, you know, from, from people when they will, you know, hear about this, you know, being there. But I think we have to look at, you know, what we actually can have an impact on. And I, and I think, you know, those are the things that, you know, we certainly want to weigh in at this point and say that, you know, these are the things that, you know, we're concerned about.
Well, I think though, too, looking at our area, I mean, I've lived in this area about 20 years, and I can, it's amazing how it's changed in 20 years, Route 20 especially. And I think that right now, when you look at something like this, it doesn't look like it's very populated. If you look at it isolated in and of itself, but when you get into the Route 90, the Mass Turnpike now is not a Friday and Sunday traffic jam or Saturday and Sunday, it's now Thursday through Tuesday morning, and the alternate route is Route And the alternate route is Route 20. And you add, we just add to these things, and that's now. I mean, and by the time this is all built and everything, I don't even know what the timeframe is, but I'm going to guess it's a couple of years or more. It's not going to be less, it's going to be more. You know, so I think that the impact, it's great to do these studies. I'm sure they started this a long time ago. I'm sure it wasn't just started recently. And I think between the time that they've done that and the time that the work actually happens, I mean, we can look at projects in our own town that we approved and worked on five years ago and are just getting finished. So when you look at this project and you're doing the same thing, and you look five years out from now, I mean, I dare say, I would hate to venture, I mean, what it'll be like. Route 20 would need to be basically a six-lane highway, and the Mass Pike would have to go up to more, you know, again. And we're just never going to have enough roads to take care of what we have, what the traffic will bear. Whatever we create, it'll just fill the gap very quickly. But I guess my concern for this is, you know, there's other potential, this whole area for development is very, we've had a lot of other businesses that have gone in there and have created traffic. And I think that that's kind of an open area in a lot of ways that has other ramifications down the line. Because there's not a lot of space in Sturbridge left, as we know, when people want to develop. So I think that this route is something that people will look at more and more, thinking that there's a lot of land there and there's a lot of potential, and there's only so much that it can handle. Because it's really, you know, it's a two-lane highway. We treat it like it's an interstate, but it's a two-lane road, you know? So that, I can understand where everybody's coming from on this. And I think that it doesn't sound like the alternative locations are any less dense. I mean, I can't imagine, you know, putting it closer to Boston, or, but it would have to go much further north or something to make it, and I don't know if that's feasible. They're probably doing it, as you said, to get closer to their customers that they're going to service. But I just think we need to look at something not in the moment. We need to look down the line, and I don't think corporations do that. They're living for the, getting the approval, and we all have to live with it. And whatever one town does that affects the other, we don't have any say in that town.
No, we don't.
And this happens time and time again. I would venture, I guess, with the people in Leicester and what they've been through with recreational marijuana in the last few weeks, would say, gosh, I never thought it would be like this. But, you know, it happens. And look at the towns that surround it, what they have to put up with, traffic and all the other things.
Maybe it increases meals tax. Maybe it brings in meals tax to the town, surrounding towns. The alternative.
Sure, go ahead, Jean.
With the Route 20 crowding, I live near there, so I probably see it more than most of the people. With the backups at Route 84, on weekends, it is not uncommon to see cars stopped up past the health club, waiting to go past Walmart. The other point I wanted to make is, since they are located in Charlton, and they pay taxes to Charlton, is Charlton presumed to be the primary fire and accident first responders?
Yes, they would be.
Okay.
But look at their fire department. Look at their fire department, and how small it is.
I'm not going to change that.
It's very small. I mean, that's really.
Same with the police.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I think, that's what Russ is.
Are there other facilities in the state that are similar, you know, to the scope of this that we could maybe look at to say, what's been the impact next one year's after?
I'm not really aware of any. And, you know, the impacts, I think, you know, to kind of go back, we're all used to reviewing as like a site plan, and this isn't anywhere near at that point yet. It's really about, will the Energy Facility Siting Board consider them a public utility? Will they determine there's a public benefit? And I'm really simplifying their request. And, but will they allow this application to go forward? So, you know, we don't have a plan in the sense of, you know, I can look at it and I can tell you, you know, how many parking spaces, how much queuing, where their, you know, exit is going to be. You know, there's some talk about limited site distance. And, you know, we did, you know, raise the issues about traffic. Actually, Mr. Supernut just came in. He was at the meeting as well, and he spoke as a resident, but talked a lot about the traffic and the need for mitigation and potential impact. So, you know, I think it's, at this point, we really need to submit this letter for the November 30th deadline. And then we really need to keep an eye to see if this moves to the next step with the Energy Facility Siting Board. We kind of have to try to stay aware of everything that's going on. And then when it gets to the local processes, you know, pay attention there as well. I did send all of this information to the Board of Selectmen as well, along with the draft comments that I had prepared for you. So they are aware as well. And I'm sure Mr. Supernut went back and brought them some information. So, you know, the notice was posted with the town clerk. The application was filed with the public library. We received the notice, which is how we ended up going to the meeting. And I forwarded everything to the Board of Selectmen. So I think we're doing everything we can to stay aware of what's going on. And, you know, it's almost, I think we have to take a wait-and-see approach. But I think it's, you know, I think it's important that we go on record about our traffic concerns and about emergency response.
Yeah, I mean, those are certainly, you know, the biggest, you know, things that would have an impact, not only on Sturbridge, but others around the community. So, I mean, if you would like to add some more wording on the emergency training, and I don't think Jean was trying to, you know, define, you know, the extent of what it should be, just that the need for, you know, proper regional planning for emergency response is critical, you know, to us. So however you wanted to add, you know, more emphasis to that, you know.
I'm fine with not including it now, since, you know, it's very preliminary. But I think at some point, that needs to be.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
You know what I mean?
And I think once they have, you know, if it does go forward and they begin to have meetings on this and say that, you know, the fire professionals, you know, get running it, then those kind of, you know, things would certainly have to come up. And then they certainly would become part of a final site plan approval. But, you know, we are pretty far away from that at this point. I mean, we're at the point really where, you know, this, you know, board is looking at, again, the overall feasibility and economic benefit for the process itself, and not necessarily, you know, the site plan issues at this point.
Was there any talk about expansion at this, for this facility at some point? I mean, they're saying 64 trips a day, or whatever it turned out to be. I mean, will that increase, or is that the limitation? That will be the limit, that this facility will not get any larger and will not have any more?
They didn't mention that, and it's not, you know, detailed in their traffic study. Their traffic study is just that, what was proposed. Whether they would expand at some point in the future, I'm not really sure.
Just for clarification, the alternative facility location, is that 116-9?
Yeah, it's the Millennium.
Yeah, Power Point plant, yeah.
Either way, you're going to get the traffic, no matter where it sits.
Right.
Okay, so is there anything else we would like to change in this? Or is this, are we comfortable with the wording pretty much the way it is now?
It's fine, we may send another letter as it goes forward.
Well, we certainly want to, you know, stay on top of knowing what's going on with it.
I think for now, this is good.
Do we need a motion then to?
Yes, please.
Have a motion then to authorize this letter to be sent to Catherine Cedar, the presiding officer for this Mass Energy Siting Board?
So moved.
Second, any other discussion? All in favor? Okay. So the next item is to discuss dates for a potential meeting with the Board of Selectmen to discuss the Route 15 study prepared by CMRPC, and to determine appropriate course of action. Want to discuss that a little bit?
Yes, so back in a while ago now, actually, CMRPC did another study on Route 15, and it kind of fleshed out an earlier study. And again, kind of gives us these three options. Are we going to encourage tourism-based businesses, industrial warehousing? Or, you know, what type of uses are we going to encourage in the corridor? And the idea all along was that we would have a, kind of a joint work session with the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. I think, you know, many of us have some issues with some of the findings of the report. But I think that we all need to sit down in one room and kind of decide which path. Is there a consensus on which path we want to go with the zoning? So that I can actually sit and draft some revisions, and so that we can meet again, the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. I don't want to, you know, take all three options, or whatever it was, and draft changes for all three, if there's, you know, kind of one clear path going forward. Or maybe there's two clear paths going forward. But, you know, I don't want to spend a lot of time without getting a little bit of direction. So my recommendation was that maybe at, and I don't know what the Board of Selectmen's schedule is. I believe that they're meeting on the first and third Mondays of the month. So I believe they would have a meeting on January 7th. We have a meeting on January 8th. We have a meeting on January 22nd, but I believe the Board of Selectmen will meet that night because the 21st is Martin Luther King Day. So I didn't know if we wanted to reach out to the board and see if they had the availability to, you know, meet together that night for a work session, and that be kind of the topic for the evening. Obviously, if we have some A and Rs or something that we have to take care of. But otherwise, just have that as kind of a, you know, a focused discussion. And maybe I can kind of put up some bullet points of, you know, key takeaways of the report, and just see if we can reach some consensus between the two groups. So if you're all in agreement, then I would send a letter to the Board of Selectmen and Mr. Cozak and ask if that would be something they would like to entertain.
So that's on the 22nd, you're thinking?
No, I was thinking, actually, I think the Board of Selectmen are going to meet on the 22nd because Martin Luther King Day is the 21st. So I'm thinking the 8th. Unless you, I mean, I don't see a lot of applications coming in. That would give the Board of Selectmen two nights in a row. You know, I don't know if it makes sense to move it to the middle of the month. I'd probably rather stick with our regular schedule and ask them if they can meet with us on the 8th. I mean, it probably shouldn't be, you know, that long of a meeting. Maybe an hour of really focused discussion. We could, you know, figure out a path forward.
Sounds good.
All right, so I will send that.
So you're talking, meeting with us, or we're meeting with them?
I'm asking them to attend our meeting.
Okay.
Because we have the availability. I'm the one that will be drafting the bylaw. So the board will be the one supporting the bylaw, so I think it's.
The only thought I had, so we're meeting on the 22nd, and they're also meeting on the 22nd?
Yes, right.
So I didn't know whether, you know, that might be a better night to just go over or have them, you know.
Oh, have, go to the Board of Selectmen.
That way, you know, they wouldn't have to come to two meetings, you know, in a row.
Right, in a row.
And, you know, if we have, you know, our agenda set so that we can deal with some of our things, then go over and see them.
Right, we could do that as well.
Make it a little easier, I'm not sure.
I can see what's, what works best for them.
Either date is fine with me, but if there's a way, you know, to just have us each meet on a regular meeting and get together, that might, you know, save it too.
Okay, sure. I mean, we're meeting that night anyway, so for us, I think.
Yeah.
All right.
So the date is 22nd?
Oh, we can find out, but we'll look at those dates and see what that works for them.
I think maybe a lot of it will depend on how busy their agenda is.
Exactly, yeah. I don't know how your second meeting of the month usually goes, do they vary?
Usually in January, it's not, not a very, you know, all the permits are done.
Right, that might work.
So either January meeting would be fine, December might be.
Yeah, we're not going to do it. Okay, well, that might work out. You can decide what they'd like, either one is fine with us.
Okay.
Great, very good, thank you. Okay, next we have the town planner update?
So our next meeting is December 11th, excuse me, I put the 13th. That is not our next meeting, it's December 11th. Heather will not be here, she has an engagement. We will be having our meeting with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission on the Complete Streets prioritization plan. So Dan Denisca will be coming out that night, we'll schedule that for 6:30. I'll also send invitation to the Board of Selectmen, if anyone is able to attend. And we'll go over the, kind of the draft plan, with the ideas that they've come up with in meeting with staff and, you know, reviewing our roads. They're actually coming out this week to do some fieldwork, go out and look at some of our intersections that are not state highways. And we'll be presenting you with a list of opportunities for improvements. And Jim, I included Fisk Hill Road on that first sidewalk from start to finish. So that will be on the 11th. We just talked about the January 8th and 22nd meetings, and I just did the update on the Complete Streets. The update on the Green Communities is, I believe that we are being designated, because I got an email letting me log into the grant site, and then I got another email saying, oh, sorry, please wait until the official announcement. So I think that was a sure giveaway, that I believe, not to jinx us at all, but I believe that we are being designated as a Green Community. So I'm very happy to have that work behind us. And of course, the work will just be beginning on the grants. And that's about it. As I said, the applications continue to remain slower, which is great, because we're working very hard to try to implement new permitting software that will allow the public to apply online for a variety of permit types. And we'll kind of automate the processes internally as well. So we are busy working on that. You won't see a lot of extra out of our department until we get that a little further, so.
How does the schedule on that look now? I know you were talking about doing some.
We were hoping to be live in November, and then we were hoping to be live in December. Now I would say, we will probably be lucky if we're live in February, to be honest. It's a lot of work, it's really a lot of work on our end, and.
How many people are involved in working to get this thing done?
So each of the departments was responsible for getting us all of their permit information, and what permits, they wanted people to be able to apply for online, and what permits they only want to handle on the inside. And then really Rebecca and I have been dealing with the implementation team and kind of meeting virtually on a weekly basis. We've been the ones kind of entering, testing, finding all of the mistakes or things that need to be changed, adding that in. On occasion, we need to ask another department for input if it's part of their process that we don't really understand. And they have a four-member team that's working with us. And we do have an IT person now, which is wonderful. So Jeremy has been working with their IT end of it, to try to help smooth things that way. But it was a little bit rocky, because we started out with, you know, our person from the school. And then we got the new, you know, Jeremy was new, so then he had to learn where he was and pick up the pieces. And then one of our big stalls was waiting for Vision to get our property database. It was a very long, drawn-out, tedious process. It was unexpected that we had to pay for this. It never came up during my discussions with the, with our ZIT. And, you know, I guess maybe I should have known the question. I guess if we had IT, they would have known to ask the question, but I didn't. So I had to go to the finance committee and get roughly another $4,000 to take care of that. So, you know, we've had some challenges, but I think it will be very user-friendly when we get it done.
Good luck with that.
But it's a lot of work. All we want for Christmas is for it to be done. Yes, I've done this before. Not our first rodeo here with software, so.
Very good. Okay, next is old business and new business, any old business, Russ?
I'm just wondering how the campground is doing. Have you heard anything?
Yeah, they're really moving along.
All the rain we've had and everything.
They are, they're moving along well. They've, you know, have some interaction with DEP with trying to get their wastewater permits and their water supply finalized. But they are moving along, you know, they've done a lot of demolition of the old structures that were there, a lot of general cleanup. And once they, they're hoping that they will have everything done so that they can open up sometime this camping season, so I know they're. So I know they're, you know, they're working a lot.
So are they permitted, all approval from conservation and everything, or...
From conservation, yes. Yeah, yeah.
They've got, done a lot of building.
Yes, yes.
Really have.
They've been really active. Mr. Moreau's been here a lot from California, so he's spending an awful lot of time here. He's a Boston fan, he's gone to Red Sox games. He comes in with his Red Sox jacket on, so he's converting to a New Englander.
Very good, anything else, Russ?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Jim?
Yep, all said.
All said.
I had one, one topic. So I know we approved a larger sign at 198 Charlton Road, and I believe we approved it to be 20 feet from the property line. Just driving by, it didn't look, it looked like it was less than 20 feet. I don't know if there's a way for us to just verify that, because I know that there was some discussion around approving that and being fair to all the businesses in town. So we want to make sure that it just complies with the approvals that we gave it.
Yeah, I will check it.
Good. Chris? Any new business? New business?
I have one thing.
Sure.
So at the CMRPC meeting, it was distributed that they are taking applications for community members to apply for technical assistance. And so I just wanted to notify the board that they're looking for applications to be submitted for consideration for projects that would be completed in 2019. And I don't know if there's typically a process in which we go about to make recommendations or have discussions about those, but just wanted to put that on the agenda.
Right, usually what they'll do is they'll outreach to me. We generally have a list of goals that we're trying to accomplish in any given year. And so I'll try to peruse that list of goals out of the master plan to see if it matches, aligns with the criteria they've set for any given year. And then when I determine that I've found something that looks like complies, then I bring it back to the planning board and ask that you vote to support and send that in. And then it goes to the town administrator, and he has to sign off, he or she has to sign off on the application, and then it gets submitted that way. So we've worked on the Route 15 study. We've done a lot of work in the commercial tourist district under that program. I worked on a mill redevelopment technical assistance project for 9 Holland Road, trying to get interest in revitalizing that, just to give you an example of some of the projects we've done with that technical assistance.
Great.
Very good, anything else? Okay, very good.
On 9 Holland Road, is there any, where's that stand? Have you heard anything?
Still moving forward. I talked to Mr. Rowan about three, four weeks ago, maybe. I think was the last communication we had with him. And he still sounded positive about the project and that he was moving forward on it. And he, I'm expecting that it moves forward, I hope that it does. And I spoke with Frank at Burton, and as far as he knows, we're still kind of, you know, heading in that forward direction as well, so...
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, there was a story recently, wasn't there, in one of the Sturbridge magazines? So that kind of got the, although, you know, the sign on the property still says for sale.
I know, yeah.
I don't think it's at the point where he has any real, any direct involvement yet, does he?
He has it under agreement.
Under agreement, oh, good.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be a great project, so that'd be wonderful.
Really nice.
Great, anything else? Motion, it's your turn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Very good. Thank you.